This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the Town of North Haven.
Alrighty, good evening everyone. My name is Stacy Yarborough. I am the Town of North Haven Town Clerk and Tax Collector. At this time, I'd like to call the Annual Town Budget Meeting to order. This meeting is brought pursuant to Chapter 7, Section 706 of the North Haven Town Charter. Before we begin, I'd like to give you, as I always like to do, a little history of how we reach a budget in the Town of North Haven. You might wonder how this budget comes to be. And so each year in December, each department head and their Board of Education is asked to submit a tentative budget for the departments for the upcoming fiscal year. That's presented to the Board of Finance. And each new year, the department head is required to go before the Board of Finance and defend said budgets. The Board of Finance then takes all the information they've accumulated and creates a tentative budget. And without a tentative mill rate, or mill rates, to make said budget a reasonable reality, the tentative budget was then presented this year to the town at a public hearing, which occurred on April 4th of 2023. The next step is what we're here for tonight, which is the Annual Town Budget Meeting. After tonight, we have a budget referendum, which will occur on Tuesday, May 16th, 2023. And finally, assuming that the budget passes, the Board of Finance will then meet on Wednesday, May 17th, to set everything in order so that I, as Tax Collector, can start to process of preparing the tax billing for the new fiscal year. With that in mind, before we go any further this evening, the next step in the order of business is to elect a moderator for this meeting, and that is pursuant to our Town Charter. The moderator must have been a registered voter in the town as of the last election, and only those citizens registered to vote in North Haven, as well as citizens of the United States 18 years of age or more, who also may qualify by paying taxes to the town on an assessment of property of not less than $1,000 on the most recent grant list. And those people may vote pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-6. All of these requirements are in order with regard to not only the moderator, but if you vote on any of the issues we have before you tonight. If you are not sure if you are eligible to vote, you may very well check with me. I keep a list of all registered voters and if you're voting off the grand list. This time, what I'd like to do is open the floor for nominations for our meeting moderator. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Teresa Ranciato-Villi.
Is there a second?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Alrighty, are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, I will close the nomination process and move on to the voting. All in favor of Teresa Ranciato-Villi as tonight's meeting moderator, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Hearing none, it is a successful vote in favor of Teresa Ranciato-Villi for tonight's meeting moderator. I declare Teresa Ranciato-Villi the moderator for the evening.
Thank you, members of the town meeting. At this time, the Town Clerk will read the call of the meeting.
The annual ballot, the annual budget town meeting to be held on Monday, May 8th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium of the North Haven High School, 221 Elm Street, North Haven, Connecticut, to conduct the following business. One, to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance to take action regarding the budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024. And two, to establish the due date and number of installments for the payment of property taxes, and that would be real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, and supplemental motor vehicle taxes. And this is in accordance with Section 12-142 and 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statutes. And three, pursuant to Section 7-7 of the Connecticut General Statutes, to adjourn said meeting at its conclude, sorry about that, at its conclusion, and to submit the question concerning the adoption of a budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024, to vote by paper ballot on Tuesday, May 16th, 2023, including the establishment of the exact hours of voting at referenda pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-9B. That voting will take place between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00 PM, 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM, at the following North Haven polling place, all districts. Mildred-Wakely Rec. Center, which is located at 7 Linsley Street. The aforementioned recommendations will be placed on paper ballots as the following question. Shall the Town of North Haven, in accordance with the recommendations of the Board of Finance, approve and adopt a budget consisting of $61,643,954 for the Board of Education, and $59,856,429 for the Town Government, for a total amount of $121,503,833 for the fiscal year July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024? Voters approving said question will vote yes, and those opposing said question will vote no.
The Town Clerk will now read the first and third items of the agenda. These two items will be discussed, yet not voted on at tonight's meeting.
And that is with regard to Agenda Item Number 1, which is the to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance and to take action regarding the budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024. And Agenda Item, excuse me, Number 3, pursuant to Section 7-7 of the Connecticut General Statutes, to adjourn this meeting at its conclusion, and we will submit the question concerning the adoption of the budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024, to a vote by paper ballot on Tuesday, May 16th, 2023, including the establishment of the exact hours of voting at referendum, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-9B. That voting will take place between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM at the following North Haven polling place, all districts. Mildred-Wakely Recreation Center at 7 Linsley Street. The aforementioned recommendation will be placed on paper ballot as the following question. Shall the Town of North Haven, in accordance with the recommendations of the Board of Finance, approve and adopt a budget consisting of $61,643,950 for the Board of Education, and $59,856,429 for the Town Government, for a total amount of $121,503,833 for the fiscal year July 1st to June 30th, 2024? Voters approving said question will vote yes, and those opposing said question will vote no.
Thank you, Stacy. So four, ensuing discussion. All speakers must be recognized, come to the microphone, and clearly state your name and address. You have to come to the microphone, or your comments will not be audible for the broadcast. Discussion will be limited to the pending question, and we'll try to limit discussion five minutes per person. You can always be called upon again after other people have spoke. So is there any discussion? For select manfreda.
Well, thank you very much, and welcome to tonight's meeting. I'd like to start off by asking Teresa to join me here at the podium just for a moment. So this young lady and I have worked very closely together for many, many years, and I'd like to thank her for all of her years of service for being the Town Moderator. This, ladies and gentlemen, will be her last evening as Town Moderator, as her and her wonderful husband, John, will be moving. I hope you don't mind me to say that.
No, that's fine. I think almost everybody knows.
So Teresa, I'd like to, first of all, on a personal note, tell you how much I've enjoyed working with you, and to thank you personally on behalf of the Town of North Haven for all the years as Town Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, a round of applause for Teresa Villi.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And I wasn't wearing glasses when I started doing this, so. It's been a long time.
Alright, so last month, ladies and gentlemen, I presented the town budget. This slide presentation is a recap of what we spoke about last month, with maybe one or two different slides that I'd like to share with you. We started off last month by reviewing back to 2017, what the mill rate was, and what the mill rate has been each year from 2017 to 2022. We were very fortunate down through these years that we had some stability in the mill rate. This year's budget will reflect and represent a mill rate increase. When we look at the overall budget, the town budget moves to $58,832,896, and you see the $3.6 million dollar change, a 6.6% increase. The capital, we moved from $371,950. Last year, we had the benefit of utilizing federal dollars to offset the capital expense in the budget, but we still were able to buy a lot of equipment with the federal dollars. So this year, we're at $723,000, a dollar change increase of $351,000. Our contingency, the emergency account, stays the same at $300,000. Patrick will be speaking momentarily regarding the Board of Ed, and he'll outline for you what that budget consists of. So the total budget moves to $121,503,833, a 4.7% increase. When we break down the expenditures, 49% is on the town side, and 51% on the Board of Ed side. This does not include the debt service that the town handles for the Board of Ed. So the current mill rate, as you saw, is 30.71. The proposed mill rate is 32.65. That is the proposed mill rate increase for the fiscal year starting July 1st. What I didn't mention last month is that there is a cap at the state level on vehicles, the car mill rate, the car tax. So that mill rate caps out at 32.46. The reason this was instituted last year was that there were so many municipalities that were well over a 40-mill rate, including the city of Hartford that was at a 77-mill rate, that the state worked out a cap that no municipality can cap vehicle taxes at more than 32.46 mills. The municipalities would then get reimbursed by the state for the difference. So if we take Hartford as an example, they were at 77 mills. They capped out last year at 32.46, so the state reimburses Hartford at the end of the fiscal year for the difference between 77 mills and 32.46. So what that means, ladies and gentlemen, for us is that our mill rate, which is going to be 32.65, will be the mill rate for real estate, but for vehicles, 32.46. And the town will end up getting reimbursed for the difference from the state at the end of this coming fiscal year, and that, we think, is somewhere between $60,000 and $80,000. So it's very important for everyone to understand that before we even come up to present this budget to the public, we've already made several reductions as part of the requests from the department heads before we present to the public. So here is a summary, like I outlined last month, as to what some of those reductions in requests were. They were not reductions in the existing budget, reductions in the requests. The total reductions from the original requests, which start as part of our process in December, $3,112,514 were reductions from the original requests. As you can see, these are some of the categories. We reduced the Election Day request expense by $4,000. We reduced the requests from the library for incremental expending by $185,000. We reduced the Police Department's requests by $234,000, of which a lot of that, as you see, is in capital, not in police officers. Community services and recreation, out of the requests, we carved out $275,000. $70,000 out of the Fire Department requests. $1,654,455 out of Public Works, of which $1.3 million was purchasing 96-gallon trash cans for every household in the town. When we look at the decrease in capital, we see $2,418,000. That was the capital requests that were asked for. So additionally, we took out, we reduced our medical by $350,000. That's our line item in the budget for health insurance for the employees. Contractual obligations by $50,000. The Volunteer Fire Association, we have since added that back in, so that slide should have been updated. We're back to that $33,000. Transportation and hauling, we dropped it by $10,000, hoping that there will not be storms and tornadoes and hurricanes where we have to send debris out, and that's a, we not only pick it up, but send it out. There's a tremendous cost to that. Unemployment compensation, so we reduced by another $440,000. And there you see at the bottom of this chart, ladies and gentlemen, the $3,112,000 of requests that we cut out. Now, as I mentioned last month, for the first time, this government has been pounded by inflation. And let's take a look at some of those municipal services that are dramatically affected by inflation. Our fuel costs have gone up tremendously. Keep in mind, we have cars on the road, police cars, fire trucks. We have public works vehicles gobbling up fuel on a daily basis. Electricity costs have gone up. Everything we do on building maintenance, we have to outsource it. The cost of outside contractors and materials have gone up. On drainage and catch basin, a specific example is on one street in town. We had estimated putting a new pipe in to alleviate drainage issues for that neighborhood at about $300,000. It came back through a bid process. The low bid was $3/4 of a million. The Water Pollution Control Authority, those expenses have risen dramatically. And pool chemicals, the equipment and the maintenance on the pool also has risen. We take our Fire Department. They're out there every day responding, highway accidents, 911 calls. Well, the medical supplies used by our paramedics and EMTs have gone through the roof in terms of the cost. That's another thing that we're seeing very clearly. Public safety, and that ties into, we need those supplies. We have to have those supplies. So we have to pay whatever the cost is. And basic things like office supplies and postage continue to go up. Paving. Every year, we try to pave 10 miles worth of roadways. That used to cost $2 million, $200,000 a mile. This year, $300,000 a mile. We're still going to be paving with a couple of roads in the spring, the balance of the paving cycle in the fall. I will go to a public meeting to get approval for the $3 million. But over the course of two years, that has gone up from 200, actually, 230. It was $200,000 in 2020. It went to 230 in 2021. $270,000 last year, and $300,000 this year. Let's take a look at some of the incremental expenses that we are proposing that we think are needed to maintain and to slightly enhance existing services. So we look at the Police Department, a total of $819,000 in incremental expenses. The Fire Department, $475,000. And as Patrick will present momentarily, $1,477 for the Board of Education. This incremental expense chart does not reduce any teachers, police officers, or firefighters. When we look at the public safety, and we include animal control and fire, as we mentioned, we get a little bit of a break on civil service, but the total public safety costs are $1,281, incremental costs. That's extra, and that's so needed, ladies and gentlemen. Public safety is critical to the safety of a community. Let's take a look at some of the core town expenses that are required for us to maintain fiscal stability as a government. Our town health insurance has gone up for the employees, $369,000. Our pension obligations, an additional $745,950. And the debt between the middle school, the Police Department, and the Fire Department has gone up $666,000 in this coming fiscal year. There's a debt service line in the budget, ladies and gentlemen, and that's going up $666,000. And, you know, I'm out in the community on a regular basis. I'm at all the events. This weekend, I was on the go Friday night, all day Saturday, all day Sunday. And anybody that asks me this, I say that once we see a new building, that doesn't mean it's paid for. That means the payments are just beginning. And we're seeing an escalation in debt service as a result of that. This becomes, has become a problem for this coming fiscal year. Let's take a look at the revenue loss and the cost of debt. So by, from the state, we're losing $288,000 in what's called payment in lieu of taxes. We no longer will have the federal dollars that every municipality received the past two years. That represents a revenue loss of $1,670,000. And the town had budgeted for almost $1 million worth of Esther 2 and 3, and that's not going to happen this fiscal year. The debt on the middle school renovation, which was a $69 million project, the Police Department was $18 million. This was the cost of these projects, ladies and gentlemen. The firehouses, we're still paying off the last few years on those houses, the four houses. That was $9.2 million. And every year, we pave 10 miles worth of roads. We've paved 130 miles since I've been in office. So when we see the debt escalating, these are the primary drivers. So what does this debt mean for the coming budget? The debt represents itself a 7.3% increase on that debt service line. Let's take a look at the grant list growth. This is something that I spend a great deal of time on. I've just announced a new Home Goods coming in. We've got new projects that I've been talking about. So we grew the grant list by 1.4%. That's considered good in municipal government. That yields, for this coming fiscal year, $1,363,000 in incremental, extra tax money through the economic development. But it's not enough to offset the expenses that I just outlined. When we look at the current capital that is in this budget, after we took out $3.1 million in requests, we see the Fire Department at $350,000, the Police Department at $104,000, the Public Works at $70,000, the Recreation Department at $66,000, the Library at $32,000, the Finance Department $20,000, IT $71,000, and the Martha Culver Facility at $10,000. And I was just with our third Congressional Congresswoman during the week. We received a grant for $600,000 for the Martha Culver Facility, which will really take $600,000 in future capital requests out. That money will be used to restore that Martha Culver Facility. Total capital request in this budget, as I mentioned, $723,533. And this is the budget history going back to 2018. This 4.7% increase, you can see how it relates to previous years, going back to 2019 and 2020. What does this mill rate increase represent to the average homeowner? I think that's very important for everyone to know. An average home in North Haven is valued at $300,000 with a net assessment of $210,000. This would represent a yearly tax increase of $407 a year, or on a monthly basis, $34. That tax increase protects the existing services, including leaf collection, slightly enhances services, no reduction in any services, with a slight, as I said, enhancement. This budget supports education. It enhances our current public safety, maintains existing services, and covers the inflationary increase in existing services. To summarize the referendum, we want a large turnout, May 16th. All voting at the Mildred-Wakely Rec. Center. The Board of Finance meets next on May 17th. And then that will set the mill rate based on the results of the May 16th referendum. And that concludes this portion, ladies and gentlemen, of the presentation. I'll ask Patrick Sturck, our Superintendent of Schools, to come up, and then we'll both entertain questions at the end of Patrick's discussion. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting a recap of the Board of Education's budget for the 23-24 school year. There is little change to the overall budget at all levels and within all departments. The far majority of increases are a result of contractual obligations and cost of benefits. Within this year's budget, there is a proposal to retain four full-time positions and add an interventionist position that was in place prior to the pandemic. There are also a few additions to the Athletic Department that I will elaborate later on in the presentation. So in creating this budget recommendation, we were committed to maintaining these priorities. Maintain the district's focus on improving academic achievement and providing extracurricular opportunities for all students. Meet contractual obligations, and utilize the vision of a graduate to drive budget planning. The proposed budget recommendation provides the following. Resources to educate 3,204 students. This is actually six more students than when I presented back on April 4th. Mental health, nutrition, and medical care to allow students to access instruction. Specialized services required for all students to meet their potential. Diverse opportunities for students to engage in activities outside of their curricular pursuits. And transportation to and from school. The Board of Education's initial increase for the 23-24 school year was $1,727,624. This represented a 2.87% increase from last year's approved budget. This increase met our contractual obligations, healthcare benefits, and increases in utilities. It also covered new positions and programs, which will be highlighted later on in the presentation. presentation. The Board of Education's initial proposed budget was lowered by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars by the Board of Finance at their March fifteenth meeting. The adjusted increase for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year is now one million four hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars, which brought the annual Board of Education budget to sixty-one million six hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. This slide highlights the five areas of where the budget proposal was reduced. Contingencies were lowered for electric, gas for heating, and gas for buses and vans by combined a hundred thousand dollars. Out-of-district tuition contingency was lowered by a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and the cleaning service contract is currently being negotiated, and we anticipate savings once it is settled. The reductions were achieved with no impact to students, staffing, or instructional materials. All proposed programs and positions will remain in this budget proposal. So, planning for the future. This portion of the presentation will highlight the additional programs and positions in this year's proposal. Two years ago, the district hired five elementary teachers using S R three funding. The goal was to lessen the number of students in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade classrooms. Our intention was to keep these positions in place for two years. But due to an increased enrollment, we proposed to keep three of these five positions in order to return class sizes similar to pre-pandemic levels. A reading interventionist at the middle school is also requested. This position was in place prior to the pandemic and would restore the academic support at the middle school to pre-pandemic level. Due to a shortage in certified athletic trainers, one was recently hired to replace the services received from Quinnipiac physical therapy. There is an approximate increase of fifteen thousand dollars to this budget area as compared to two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. And for an additional twenty thousand dollars, the proposal includes a middle school volleyball team, a middle school unified sports program, and an assistant golf coach to assist with supervision. In closing, I truly thank the community for continuously supporting the students and families of North Haven, and I look forward to our continued and collective work together. Thank you.
Is there anybody who would like to ask questions right now of the first selectman and the superintendent? Okay. Third selectman, Boemi. Sorry about that.
Yes, Sally, we have a fine question. Awesome, John. I also want to thank non-moderating representatives of service. Is this just questions or do we make a statement as well?
Um, why don't, why don't we do both? Make your statement, and then we'll call them up for questions. Sure.
I appreciate that, guys. Good evening. I want to first say that I hope folks will show at the referendum, we really need that return us at our referendum. So again, it's on Tuesday, May sixteenth, at the Rec Center. I am in support of this budget. I think that the first election did review a lot of reasons for this mill rate increase. Inflation certainly is a factor, and our dedication to public service and education is a factor. But I also want to emphasize that we did a lot of hiring last year when we had a lot of ARPA money. We had thirteen new positions put in. That budget was adopted at the referendum by you folks. And now that the federal funding is gone, really, the cost of those new positions, which are going to stay forever, getting raises and adding to our, when you hire someone, you're not just paying your salary, you're paying benefits. So it's very expensive to hire new people. We had six new police officers, hospitalers, foreign firefighters, a couple of people like sanitation, engineering office, super nuclear personnel have been added. A lot of big personnel, and to me, that is another big factor. This is a five point four billion dollar increase in the budget, and a lot of that is personnel and personnel-related expenses, line item expenses. Nevertheless, I do support this budget. As the first selectman said, the original proposal came in at three point one million higher. There were a lot of reductions, and I do want to say, commend our new finance chairman, Tim Doherty, for running a very respectful and open budget process. And I think the Board of Finance worked very well together to reach those three million dollars in reductions. And I think every effort was made to get the budget down as low as possible. Yes, this is going to be an increase. First selectman pointed out four hundred, four hundred and seven dollars for someone for the house assessed at two-ten. If your house is assessed at three-ten, it's going to be a lot more than that. You know, that, that two-ten is the average house. Lots of folks have asked us worth four, worthless. You can figure out your own tax obligation based on the mill rate and your assessed value. Again, I feel obligated to respond to folks who are saying to me, Sally, why aren't you running the first election over the calls for going against this promise years ago that taxes would not go up if we ever got Amazon? And I'm going to repeat what I said last month and the day before the budget public hearing. I am not holding the first selectman to that. That was said at the time, and he was trying, fighting very hard to convince folks that we needed Amazon. There was some pushback at that time. People were concerned about traffic and other concerns, and the first selectman, I thought, was rightly trying to advocate for Amazon. Amazon has been very good for this town, not only in its increase in incremental tax revenue, but for the impact that it's had on economic development north of exit twelve on Washington Avenue. So even though some folks are wondering why I'm not screaming about it, that's the reason. This is an unavoidable tax increase. When you have your taxes going up more to five million a year, and the grant list has been pretty much flat the last couple of years, except for in the area of motor vehicles, you know, we only have, our grant list increase only generated one point three million in extra revenue. So, I mean, you do the math. If you're only bringing in one point three in additional revenue and you're going up five point four million, then obviously, a mill rate increase is necessary. But I believe that because of the hard work of the finance board, that this, they got it down to a manageable one point nine four mill rate increase. The original increase would have been much higher. As to the Board of Ed, I think that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction in the, in the increase is fair. Again, three point one million was subtracted from the entire budget, and the two hundred and fifty thousand reduction in their increase was reasonable, given their budget of sixty-one million. And again, their budget is still going up, one point four seven seven million. That reduction of two fifty was a reduction only in the increase, not in their total budget. I do have one question for the first selectman, and it regards the fire department to two new inspectors. I noticed that they are on page forty-two, employee table, as they should be. And I thought that at the Board of Finance meeting, the budget book, the Board of Finance meeting in March, had them still listed on page twenty-eight, fire department section of the budget, as a line item down near the bottom, under the voice button, consultants, inspectors, investigator. And there's a discussion about how they should really be personnel, because we are hiring them for liability reasons. We are hiring them as employees rather than consultants, which are basically independent contractors. So I'm wondering why, the only change on the budget book from, from April, next, the Board of Finance meeting, and the budget book available on the tables outside here tonight, is that that one hundred and fifty thousand dollar line, which has moved up under personnel, but it's still not a personnel line item, it's still shown as an expenditure line. So I'm just wondering, why, why is that? Why aren't we showing the hundred thousand for the full-time new employee investigator in the full-time personnel line? And why aren't we showing part-time personnel, fifty thousand? If you look at all of the other departments, you divide it up between full-time and part-time and have them listed like that in the book. So, you know, the reason why I'm concerned, because we're hiring these guys for legal reasons, for liability. And this is a published document on our website. I think that if we really are making them employees, they should be reflected as personnel in the budget. I think you're running a little risk of not doing that. I heard a discussion at the Board of Finance meeting that the director of administration and procurement down in the finance office wanted to keep it that way to monitor that line. I remember that being discussed at the Board of Finance meeting. But you could, you could do that internally with the monthly expenditure reports throughout the year for the Board of Finance. I still believe that in this budget book, which lists them, rightfully so, as employees in employee table on page forty-two, their salaries should be marked as personnel on page twenty-eight. Otherwise, we could make the argument, well, they're not really employees, they're just employees that pay. So I just feel more comfortable if it was done that way. So that's my one question to Mr. Frida. And then my one question to Superintendent is, can you just give us an idea of how much ARPA money the Board of Ed received over the past two years? I believe it's somewhere around four point four, maybe four point six million, and if all of that has been spent yet? So those are my two questions. One for Mr. Frida, and one for Superintendent Sturck. And to everybody out there, please come and vote and support this budget. Board of Finance did a great job. All of your services will be maintained. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Okay, thank you, Sally. We'll take a look at that. You know, the director of administration did want to track it, but we'll take a look at changing it. There's, you know, approximately five hundred line items, ladies and gentlemen, in this budget, four fifty to five hundred. So, we made a note, we'll take a look at it, and see if we can correct it.
Superintendent, you had a question, right?
ARPA funding was at four point four million, and it is all currently encumbered.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the pending items? Okay, Nancy Barrett.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Barrett, and I live in One Crescent Drive. I happen to be elected member of the Board of Finance, but I'm speaking today not as a member of the Board of Finance, but just as an informed community member and taxpayer. I'd like to say that I support this proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget, and I'd like to thank everyone who contributed to the content development of this budget over the last six months. In particular, I'd like to give a shout-out to Board of Finance Chair, Mr. Jindani, as well as the new vice chair, Ayea Masekew. They have demonstrated the amended whiteboard leadership. Even though this budget is five point five million dollars larger than the current fiscal year budget, and will require an almost two mil increase in the town's tax rate, as was mentioned, it is significantly three point one million dollars smaller than the first version, which was started off at about eight point six million dollars higher than the current fiscal year budget, and would have required a three mil increase. Personally, I was very glad to see that significant cuts to the capital requests enabled us to avoid making a four hundred thousand dollar reduction to the Board of Education requested budget. Instead, we only had to make a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction to the increase. So if this budget is in fact approved on May sixteenth, next year, the Board of Ed will get an extra one point five million increase rather than one point seven million. I support this pro-education change, which, as was mentioned, will have no impact on students, teachers, staff, administrators, or instructional materials. While I agree with Mr. Frida's list of factors that contributed to the escalating budget costs, one variable that he did omit was the impact of annual hiring practices on the town budget in successive years. As Lieutenant Wayne pointed out, the three-year Board of Ed had thirteen new town positions with the current fiscal year budget carry forward next year and the year after that. The most expensive use of our taxpayer dollars is associated with funding newly-created, full-time salary positions in our town. That is more expensive than any stuff you could ever buy, because the expense of those new positions' salaries and benefits snowballs and grows in perpetuity. I would also like to emphasize the cautionary tale that we have witnessed with our Board of Education and with the fire department, using temporary grant funding, whether it be from the federal government, in American Rescue Plan Act, or through safer grants, to hire full-time employees. Because guess what, folks? When those grants run out, and they will run out, yes, it was expected to pick up the tab forevermore. That's right, taxpayers. As we all know, there's no such thing as free lunch. The last point that I'd like to make requires that, be the taxpayers in North Haven, think of working ourselves as investors. To me, the focus of this budget developing process has always been exclusively on the input side, bringing in revenue in order to support very specific expenditures. But as a results-oriented person, I'd like to see a paradigm shift to also focus on the output. I believe that there is this very pervasive and unchallenged assumption, that if we simply throw more money at each department, then we'll fix all problems, improve individual and collective performance, and enhance the services provided to our community. But then, there's been no proof of concept verifying this particular assumption. Statistics such as spending, volume of one-on-one calls, inflation, recession, and the ever-lusive impact of the COVID-nineteen pandemic are frequently cited to justify increased departmental budgets. But then there's no follow-up to show the direct impact of more spending on North Haven citizens. We need to answer very basic questions. Did this extra investment make a positive difference in the outcomes? Where is the data that shows that the addition of people, technology, customized facilities actually improved services? And I'd like to be very clear about something. I believe that the employees of the Board of Education, as well as the town, work very hard, but we have no objective way to assess the fruits of their labor. I think that it's time to start demanding objective metrics to show the return on investment in ways that matter. And by that, I don't just mean curb sale. I don't just mean shiny buildings and vehicles and equipment, because those things break down. I mean, show me quantified proof that as a result of the extra millions of dollars invested year after year, we can see progress. For example, in education, are our students doing incrementally better academically? Show us those test scores, not just the standard academic scores, but also those scores on tests for vocational placement. Show me that public safety is... Show me that public safety is improved in terms of response time, lives saved, and reduced crime rates. We hear anecdotes, but we really should be seeing reports that show us progress over time. Show me evidence of improved public health, both mental and physical, which is absolutely narrative, as we all can see and watch movies every night. And show me environmental enhancements, not just beautification, although that's nice, but a safer and less toxic environment, in terms of soil, water, air, food supply. We all need to be informed consumers and vocal advocates, demanding measurable and significant returns on our invested dollars. Thank you for your time and attention, and please get out and vote at the Budget Referendum on May 16 at the North Haven Center. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Yes.
Pat Nuzolillo, Seven Mansfield Road, Chairman of the North Haven Fire Commission. I'm so pleased to hear the support of this budget. The Board of Finance has worked diligently, and it has been a daunting task, as I said at the last meeting, to complete all of the requests of each of the departments, to pare down the requests of where it is today. Tim, thank you for your job well done. Please send my best regards and congratulations to you, Tim. Certainly, from the Fire Department's standpoint, and the safer grant that was spoken about earlier, we're hopeful that we will have an opportunity to bring more firefighters onboard, to deliver quality customer service to the residents of our town. And it is measured, and certainly measured in many different ways. We save lives, we respond, we take care of folks in their greatest time of need, not only as the Fire Department does, but certainly as our Police Department does. Our chiefs are here this evening, and I thank you very much, and each of your departments, for delivering the services that you do to our town. I see our public works throughout here. Thank you so much for your service, and, and your persons who delivered quality customer service every single day. I'd be grateful to thank our tax collectors when I see them at 6:00, 6:30 in the morning, and when they're out there raining, snow, sleet, or you know, like their postal service, they do a marvelous job. Thank you for that. And the residents of our town really understand completely that it is the max for the minimum, where we get the lowest amount of services for the least amount of money. They cost a significant amount of money to deliver quality service to our residents of this town. And our town leadership, my Frida, and our Board of Finance, and all of the boards and commissions do a tremendous job to deliver those services. So I think, I, I'd like to certainly thank each and every one of our departments, all of our employees of this town who have delivered those services, and all of the new employees that have been hired, because throughout the years, we've been understaffed tremendously in each of our departments, and we brought people onboard over the last few years to shore up those shortcomings. So I appreciate the fact that the Board of Finance has seen the work to do so. I look at our Board of Education, that it's done a marvelous job with our, with our school systems. Even though we have tremendous influx of students coming into our town, think about it. We have had seniors throughout the years who have moved out of North Haven, young families who have moved in with children, school age, that have been coming into our school systems. And when you look at a Board of Education increase, it's all in proportion to the number of students that are coming in. The responsibilities that we have as far as our, the contracts are concerned, and our teachers do a marvelous job, shorthanded, and I could speak to this specifically. We have most recently helped to, to showcase one of the schools that came to our place of business, and they had a tremendous presentation, and it just showed to the type of support that the teachers and the parents have made on the students of the Ridge Road School, particularly the second and third grade, and I, I D Road area. It's just mind-boggling, the kind of work that they do with less. So I support this budget. I appreciate the support from many of the speakers here tonight, and I, again, thank the Board of Finance for their job well done.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Anyone else? Nope, seeing no hands. The Town Clerk will now read the final item to be considered this evening.
Thank you. Agenda item number two. To establish the due date and number of installments for the payment of property taxes, real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, and supplemental motor vehicle taxes in accordance with Section 12-142 and 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statutes, be it resolved that upon approval of the town budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024, and in accordance with Section 12-142 and 12-144 of the Connecticut General Statutes, insofar as the adoption of the budget calls for the laying of a tax on property other than motor vehicles, the tax shall be due in two semi-annual installments on July 1, 2023, and January 1, 2024, respectively, and shall be payable without penalty by August 1, 2023, and February 1, 2024, respectively. And further, insofar as such tax applies to motor vehicles, in accordance with Section Dash, Section 12-144A of the Connecticut General Statutes, such tax shall be due in single installment on July 1, 2023, and payable without penalty by August 1, 2023. And as to supplementary taxes on motor vehicles, as provided in Section 12-71B of the Connecticut General Statutes, such tax shall be due in a single installment on January 1, 2024, and payable without penalty by February 1, 2024. Is there a second?
Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing no hands, we're going to go straight to voting on the resolution. Item number two of the agenda. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? Motion passes. And as noted before, the vote upon the actual budget will occur at referendum on Tuesday, May 16, 2023. The minutes of this meeting, as well as the results of the budget referendum, will be reported by the Town Clerk as soon as possible. There being no further business for this annual Budget Town Meeting, I hereby declare the meeting adjourned. Good night.